Both council and commissioners see things or hear things about the same time and try to work towards it all together, and we thought that might be a good way to start. And so, instead of bringing them to a city council meeting since things were timing, we're working out, I thought it was appropriate to bring them as the beginning of our retreat, because I think some of the information they provide may play into some of the discussions later on today. So, without further ado, and then we'll, after they've finished, we'll then start kind of our retreat, so I think we've got that, and we'll go into that. So, without further ado, Steve, thank you. Welcome. Thanks for having us out here. You guys had, kind of, like, I really wanted to come dressed like that, but she went out and got a new dress, so I had to dress up.
I spend a lot of time where I go.
She says, "You can wear whatever you want to, but I'm dressing up." In your folders, the first thing you'll see is our new book. See, do you remember what I wore in the morning look like? This is totally prepped, totally, all updated information, and that shows our new logo. So, we come from hiding under a rock to slamming everybody in the face. We've got a lot to talk about, and I'm a little nervous, I'm excited, I'm a little nervous, so forgive me. This will take about 10 minutes. After that, you guys can ask questions, tell us to leave, whatever. So, this is going to give you a little history from the last couple of years, up till now, what we're doing and where we're going to go. There's so much here, if you'll forgive me, we're probably going to read this. I haven't had a chance to memorize it. The Trinidad, Los Angeles County Economic Development is pleased to come before the city council. Today, we bring you up-to-date innovative C-House, exciting changes that we're doing and what the office has planned.
Thank you all so much for listening to us. Over the, this is a brief history of what's been going on, and then we're going to go into the future. Over the past two years, the Economic Development Office has managed to survive unlimited funds, two board members, and a looming recession, which we all are aware of this. As a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, the Trinidad, Los Angeles County Economic Development Office has relied on the city and the county to support ED operations since 1983. These monies at one time were enough to support the office's operations, marketing, and all of the things, the tools that you need to go out and market yourself as a growing and ambitious city to bring people in. However, dwindling funds over the years and due to lower tax revenues from the city and the county, we have realized a major decrease in our funding. At the end of 2012, after reviewing our budget, it was determined that the office could only survive one more year. And faced with the fact that no new business has been brought into the town or generated from that office, no new prospects were on the horizon, there was no rainbows appearing. It seemed the destiny of TLACED's third-year history would close its doors in December of 2013. The office was a one-man bandit, drumroll please, with two active board members, and at that time, the goal was just to operate on the minimal funding, just to keep the doors open and have a face for economic development. There was no monies allowed for updating our website, which at that time was operated by an alibaria source, and every time we made a phone call, it caused ED $75 to $150 to make any kind of changes, which was a mistake to have that done in the first place, but that was not the one-man bandit's fault. There wasn't funding for any of the necessary tools that are needed to promote economic development in Trinidad. We lacked a full board of directors, we were lacking funding other than just operational funding, and we needed those monies to become successful. However, they were not there.
Now, we go on to the industrial park, and there are 26 lots that don't have any infrastructure, electric, sewer, gas, water. The lots in Phase 1 and 2, they're sold out with the exception of 2. That's all we have left to sell. There are vacant buildings on the lots owned by absentee owners, and these buildings will deteriorate without proper upkeep and occupancy. Several of these buildings have been, have rented to individuals by the owners. However, the landscaping, cleaning, presentation of the lots and buildings have not been kept up by the owners as outlined in our comments. In your package, you'll find the current MOU online. Full board of lost guys. In your package, you'll find the current MOU and ordinances from the city of Trinidad and a copy of the tip ordinances. Several violations have been noted that encompass the landscaping of vacant buildings and upkeep of the purchased lots. Years of weeds and debris have accumulated on these properties, thus creating an eyesore. We have gotten together with the city's, what is that zoning, the...
Their ordinances, their...
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement.
Code enforcement. And we met with them, and they're going to work with us to help get those things cleaned back up. So, man.
Okay. The future. We have put together a business plan, and this is a common sense, achievable business plan. We are not going to reach for unattainable goals, as a lot of places try to do, and they wind up failing. We set up a plan that is based on success, not set up to fail. There are now two full-time employees, myself and Stephen, and we are using, as you can see by our new logo, what we have done is we have taken the old Economic Development Office and given it a new face, something that people can recognize, something that's vibrant, something that portrays progress. And in those things, we understand what the primary function is of the Economic Development Office, and that's to recruit, enhance, and help develop new business in the city of Trinidad and Los Angeles County. Simply existing as the office has done in the last two years is unacceptable. Therefore, it is imperative that Economic Development Office develop a viable business plan that will enhance the efforts of the city and the county to bring in new business, or at least attract attention to what we have here. As we all know, we can no longer rely on the energy industries. They deserted us for 100 years or more. This town has relied on the energy industry, coal, gas, and that industry will probably come back someday. However, in the meantime, we cannot depend on these people, who when they leave, our people leave. They follow them to Midland, to wherever they go. We have to find retention in businesses that we attract here, and I'm talking about technology, small manufacturing, things that we can handle, not only with the workforce that we have in the city, but also with our infrastructure. We are positioned on probably the highest traveled highway north-south of I-25, which gives us an advantage. We have the railroads, we have everything that is needed to support small business in the city. And what we've done, and how we're going to do this, is we are going to build a working board of directors by recruiting members from the business community within the city and the county, and we're really trying hard to do that. In fact, we did get Michelle to come to one of our meetings as a business owner, and we were thrilled to see her there. We need to create strong and lasting relationships with state and local governments by attending functions and increasing communications related to economic development opportunities and issues. And I'm talking about going to Denver four times a year or more, speaking with our representatives, letting them know how critical it is that we are included in those RFPs that come out for business information. Stephen went up to Denver three weeks ago, two weeks ago. People there were just thrilled to see Trinidad being represented in that capacity. We need to restore the confidence within and outside of our community. We need to create working partnerships with local and statewide businesses and economic development organizations. We need to analyze and look and see what other people are doing in communities similar to our size and location. Nobody's located in a better spot than Trinidad, and that's my opinion, but if you look at it from an outsider, we have an excellent location. We also need to attend all of the, all of the conventions and things that are related to economic development, so people can see your face, and it's not just us, it's our board, it's our mayor, people who are county officials. They need to go and let people see who we are, recognize the face, have a business card in hand. That way, they don't forget us, and unfortunately, I think we have been forgotten in certain areas. Oh, Lord. We are making steps to move forward, and you're all probably thinking, "Well, where'd you guys get the money to do all this stuff?" We stole it. No, we didn't. I'm just easy. We joined the ICSC, which is the International Association of Shopping Centers. As a nonprofit economic development organization, it only cost us $100. For a normal membership, it's $500 or more, depending on what your capacity is in that industry. For major malls, discount outlets, you're looking at $1,500 membership per year. We spent $100, we joined this organization, we have access to people who are looking for shopping center areas or places to put new shopping centers, that type of thing. It was a very good investment. Five, we need to have consistent branding of economic development in Trinidad and Los Angeles County, and we have come up with something that, to me, represents who we are and where we want to go, and that is where the Old West meets the New Frontier. I think of Star Trek, because we're all flying out there looking for new land, new this, new planets, but to me, that does tell people what we are. We're not just an abandoned coal mining town anymore. We are the Old West, and we are looking to the New Frontier. And lastly, but not loosely, we need to create a vibrant and lasting image of economic development in the city of Trinidad and in Los Angeles County. Stephen?
Thank you. We've spent a lot of time, again, I have to apologize to you guys, I know all of you guys, I don't know what I'm saying, but I am. We spent a lot of time thinking about this, talking about it, where we want to go, what we need to do, and all that kind of thing. So, there's so much in here, some of it we skipped over, but I just want you to know that we spent a lot of time putting this together, trying to get the office going to where it should be going. We started with a new website. We're going to unveil that...
22nd.
22nd.
On a Friday.
We're going to have an announcement in the newspaper. It's up and running, but it's not finished yet, but it's really kind of cool, covers a lot of things, 180 degrees from where the website was before. And we got the help of JM Era on that. They've just done a super job with that. We have our new logo, which I showed you here, we have new business cards, we have the new booklet, and we've got a new sign going up at the industrial park. It's, it's really kind of two-fold. The sign is going to go up by where big R is, and as you go there, you see just the letters, and some, a couple of those letters are missing. We're working with TSJC's welding department, and they're going to finish those two letters, and then they're going to take, and it's actually a class project, and they're going to go to the north end of the park where there is no sign, and they're going to put the letters up over there. The new big sign that's going up is going to be like, here's going to big R. On their side, there's nothing, and that's what faces the interstate. We've got this huge, new, beautiful sign, and I think you might have a picture of it in there, I'm not sure, but that's going up. We've got new window signage coming, again, thanks to JM Era. It's a whole different sign, it's going to cover across the whole width of the windows, from one end to the other. And we get to maintain that website, we get to update it, so we can do that data whenever we want to do that, it's not going to cost us anything. We're going to continue to go to trade shows as much as we can, we're going to keep a current inventory of all the lots, which we do have, we do have an inventory of it, and we've been updating it. That inventory was, it wasn't current, but we're keeping that current now. We're advertising and keep publications, which was never done before. And we need to get together with you folks and revisit the MOU that we have. I think it needs to be brought up to date, there's some areas there that we need to work on. It kind of, and I think a lot of that has to do with interpretation. We have a city ordinance about ED, and we have an MOU. I don't think they mesh, but here again, it would be interpretation, so that's why we need to sit down and revisit that. We're starting on aggressively looking for grants, twofold, one for us to maintain ourselves and the other one for grants for infrastructure for the industrial park. I have talked to Louis before about this, and I'm going to get back to him again, so we can get help on finishing those other properties that need to be done. And lastly, we're aggressively working on the retention program, which is really a good program, of trying to hold on to the businesses that we still have here in town. We try to do it twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall, because it's hard to cover everybody all at once, and we take it to the, to the, to the businesses, and we have them fill it out, we go back, pick it up, and then we compile all of that information, and then we'll bring that to you folks to let you know where the businesses in town are and what they would like to help with. So, we've got some other things to work on. We're almost through here. Now, we have a barrier.
We do have barriers, and I'm sure you're all aware of all the barriers that are happening. We have high unemployment, close to 12%, and a failing economy that's closing layoffs of the energy business creates the domino effect throughout the city and the county, and we've seen this. We read it today in today's newspaper, we see it every day. In fact, yesterday, I got a call from Bassinaw. Bassinaw wants to know what's going on, because their business has dropped tremendously. And of course, the salesperson that I am, just perpetual it seems like, I told, "We have new businesses coming," and we do, and Stephen will go over that, however, it may not be fast enough for Bassinaw, but things are happening, and they are the result of different approach to things. We're looking at things a little bit different. Yesterday, well, we'll finish with the barriers. We have our graduates leaving the area to seek jobs in other areas that have a larger population and more opportunities. The declining population that we're looking at at this point will not support a small or medium-sized business. That is what a lot of businesses look at when they are thinking about starting a new business or relocation, especially if you're into the technology or some of the larger industries. They want to see what our workforce would be, and if we can't give them the numbers that they're looking for, they will pass us by. We have the lack of infrastructure at the Trinidad Industrial Park, the vacant buildings and the businesses closing, the lack of funding, and of course, Stephen did mention, there is a conflict sort of between our ordinance with the city as well as with the letter of memorandum from the city, and we need to revisit that to bring it up to date. It appears that they were both done at two different times, and possibly one was not read while the other one was being put into effect, so that does kind of give us a question as to what can we do and what can't we do. Stephen's going to go over the new business, and these are exciting for us. I'm fired up about it. I'm also fired up about getting out there and trying to rebuild our relationships with the county and the city. I'm excited about trying to get the message out that Trinidad is ready for business, and the only way we can do this is to put our face, put our money where our mouth is, so to speak, but our face with the area, and Stephen has been doing that, and we have other things that we're looking at that have not been approved by our board yet, and Kelly can verify that. Thank you, Kelly, for coming.
Yeah, we do, looking in the paper this morning, and maybe listening to us, I don't want to say doom and gloom, but it doesn't, it doesn't look real happy sometimes, but we've got some new things coming to town. We've had a lot of discussions with this. One of them, it's not here yet, we're about that far away from it, and that's Sally's Beauty Supply is, has been looking at us for some time, but we're just almost a paper thing away from them signing the contracts coming, and they've been locating out there the big R shopping center, so that's really exciting. We have that new brewery, it's called, God, never, Dodgston Creek Brewery, who is going to locate out of the industrial park. It's a, it's a group, it's a small brewery, they will have a tasting room there, we can go out and taste beer. Initially, it'll just be run by two people. After the first year, they'll have about five employees, and when they're full production, which would be about three years down the road, they'll have 17 employees. The property that they wanted was a property that was tied up with an MOU with TSJC regarding the heavy equipment operating stuff, but I've been talking with TSJC, and they're willing to let that property go, so that we can sell that property and get this brewery off the ground. Excuse me. Then, just the other day, those folks that came and talked with you and talked to Tom, Plastic Recycling Company, they came in the office, and we had quite a discussion, geez, several hours' worth, of what they want to do and where they're going, and this thing, ultimately, when it gets off the ground, will bring in 32 jobs altogether. It's very complex, and I'm not going to get into all of it, but basically, it's recycling plastic. Along with this company, they have their own trucking outfit that they will use to truck the product away, so that's really exciting. I think that's pretty much it. I don't know what you could tell by me or not this morning, but we're really excited about what's been going on in the office. We've gone through, and the office before was just there kind of to maintain itself because of, like, the funds. I totally understand where the economy is and where you guys are, I can understand that, but because of that, certain things fall apart, or not fall apart, but fall away, and we will be one of those things, unless something happens this next year, however, during this year, however, ED or something like that changes or whatever. But with the funds that we have left, and we're fine for this year, we've decided to put it out there, to use those funds, the funds that we can use, and do what we can do, so that's where we are. We're really upbeat, we're excited, and we're just ready to go, and we have that, so, you guys have any questions? Yes?
Stephen, as I understand the conflict that you talk about between the MOU and the charter...
No, it's the, it's the ordinance. I know, you and I have discussions on this.
Yeah, I don't see so much of a conflict, the ordinance talks about general funding that you receive from the news or anything, including possibly the industrial park, but the MOU says that all of the money that's restricted for the industrial park must only be used to promote the industrial park. I mean, there's a certain amount latitude, like, if you have marketing materials and you have the industrial park in there, you can argue these stuff, but the idea of using industrial park funds for buying distance to sell beauty supply, I think is a little, a little controversial, so...
Where my...
Maybe you can present your viewpoint?
Well, I think it's, where I am is the interpretation of that word, funds. In the ordinance, it just says funds.
And then the other one is income for the industrial park.
Yeah, but what funds are they talking about? Are they talking about the funds that, like, this year, hopefully, our money coming from the city will be, for the whole year, will be $10,800? Is it talking about those funds, or is it talking about the funds that we receive when we sell a piece of property and that has to go into the other fund? The MOU is specific, it says restricted funds. The ordinance, it says...
Without changing the language, what is your, what would you like to put in?
Well, on Sally's Beauty Supply, on the brewery, on this plastic recycling thing that's coming in, the first thing that they say after we get their names is, "What kind of incentives do you do?" Before they even tell us what their business is about, "What kind of incentives are you going to give us?" The only incentives I can give anybody is if they locate in the industrial park, which I have, two times. The brewery, I'm actually giving him the use of that lab for two years, free. After two years, we will renegotiate, are they going to lease it, are they going to buy it, what do they want to do with that? I can do that all day long at the industrial park, but for, like, this plastic company, they don't know if they're going to go at the industrial park, they don't know where they're going to locate, but if they locate out of the park, I can't do anything for them. And the reason I can't do anything for us is because I have every money to do that. I do have money in the restricted funds to do that, but I can only use that at the industrial park. So, I would like to be able to have the use of those funds to, as the ordinance says, any business in the city limits of Trinidad, not just the industrial park. So, if I had use of that funds with Sally's Beauty Supply, I could say, "Well, okay, I'll help you with rent for a year." You know, I don't know, $50 bucks, $100 bucks a month, something like that, but right now, I can't do that, so...
And if you, in fact, we can provide you with this, if you RFI's or request for information... The few RFI's or requests for information that we received from the Denver ED office last year, in their outlook, they want to know specific criteria for why they should move to our area. And in that RFI is a request for what type of incentives can you give us if we come to Los Angeles County, Trinidad? And it's almost sad because you look at that and you think, "Oh, my gosh, Pueblo gave a million dollars to a tire company to relocate there. Springs gave X amount of hundreds of thousands of dollars for other businesses to locate." And we can't do that, but we have, but we can be creative. We can be able to assist if we are creative. And just like Stephen said, we can help you pay the rent at the shopping center for one year, or we can give you the land in the Tipp Park for two years with renegotiation after two years to either purchase or lease. Those are the creative ideas that we come up with. But in the industrial park, when you have 26 lots that are basically sitting there that are not sellable, they're not desirable because they do not have the infrastructure, that's something that we could be generating money from. ED office could be generating money from that. We've talked to various people about upgrading the electric and moving it to the back and how much will it cost? Railroad spurs, $2.5 million, you know? I mean, those are the things that we've looked at, and we've done a lot of research, too, to see what other cities are offering businesses and such to locate in their area. And we just don't have the company, we cannot compete in the capacity that a larger city would, but we can be creative. We can stretch the dollars that we have available. And that's why we need to revisit some of the ordinances in the MOU and things like that, see what we can do, and let's work it all out. The industrial park is a very important part of the economic development. However, the city and the county is also very important, too. And if we can't use any of those funds to sell ourselves or to help a company look at us, then it's just sitting there, and we're not doing anything with it, and that's...
You mentioned that you've been looking at what other cities are offering as far as incentives. Is there any way that you could provide that compilation, counsel?
Oh, absolutely.
That would be very much appreciated.
Right. In closing, kind of tagging on to that, what Denver does, what Colorado Springs does, they have, they get funding from the city, they get funding from the county, but the major part of their funding comes from private donors and the big businesses, the really big cities, both in Denver and Colorado Springs. We don't have those big businesses to help us do the funding of that. Pueblo, on the other hand, Tedco, Pueblo Economic Development Corporation, they're funded by a quarter percent tax. That's what we should be doing in order to perpetuate and keep ED moving on, however it looks, whether you want to name it a war chest, I don't care, you want to name it economic development, doesn't matter. If we, and this is a particular one, but if we could come up to present Trinidad with a quarter percent, eighth of a percent, sales tax, whatever, that's going to fund economic development. But more important than that, it's going to give the city, everybody in Trinidad is going to be invested and has a part of a stake in economic development, just like the tourism board is funded by the bed tax. That brings money in for them to operate, and that's what we need to have to operate. One last thing, we've been looking into fiber optics. We have fiber optics in the town, and we do have fiber optics at the industrial park. So, and I've got, what they're working on, a CCOM, to give us an estimate of how much it would cost to just put in a station to where different businesses could plug into that to run the fiber optics to their business. But we have it, Danielson's has it out there, and so does San Isabel's. So we're going to tag off with that. So the park does have fiber optics. That's good. Anything else?
Just one question. I don't think Sally's would necessarily need a lot of financing sustainably, but the brewery and recycling plant, where do their funds come from?
The brewery, Mike, he's right in the middle of getting his financing together. He's getting most of it from USDA grants or loans. The plastic company, it's investors.
Private investors.
Yeah, private investors.
All equity? All equity or...
I believe so.
Yes, we were told that this company is located in New England. And what they're doing is they're buying plastics from dumps in places that have small sorting areas, and then they come and pick it up with their trucks. They take it to the facility where it is sorted out into different grades of plastic. That plastic is then bundled into big one-ton blocks. This is a big plant. It's not some little operation. There's approximately 17 brand-new trucks, semi-trucks, that have been purchased by this company. And what they need is a property where they can put the plant, put their trucks. But what's going on is that they're gathering all of this plastic from the eastern coast, and they're shipping it or trucking it all the way over to California for import to China where it's sold. And what they do is they actually purchase the plastics, which is all water bottles to baby boys and, you know, any kind of plastic. So therefore, they're making money, and they're also paying people to bring it to them. So it's quite a big operation. Why they're looking at us is because we're right smack in the middle of where it's closer to California, but we cut a lot of their operations overhead, start down a lot, and that's why they're looking at us.
What's the name of the company?
Well, right now, we don't have the name. It's just a 21st century recycling, plastic recycling, was thrown out there. But because it would be new company here in Colorado, it would be under a different name than what it is presently. And I don't know what that name is at this point.
But the one on the east coast, it's named what?
I don't know.
We weren't told.
We weren't told. I mean, we're working with them. We've had a lot of phone calls from people who just want to talk. They have no plan, they just want to talk and, you know, say, "Well, I want to start a business," and most of them don't have any kind of background or any history. These particular, Mr. Huffens' name, they have the background, they have the business plan, they have it together, they have the names, the addresses, and phone numbers of the people that they're trying to bring into Trinidad.
I do want to make one last statement. Earlier on, Luann had mentioned something about we got a phone call from a major company, and I believe you told the name. They didn't say they were closing. They didn't say they were going to close. They just wanted information about how things are going here in town, because they initially came to town because of the gas fields. And since they're not there, you know, they don't know whether they can continue to support themselves, but they didn't say, "Yeah, we're going to leave next week," or that they are even going to leave. They just were calling for information.
Which I appreciate because we didn't hear word from Pepsi or Coachella.
In fact, we've got several phone calls out of Pepsi. They won't get back to us. We wanted to get the specifics of why they decided to...
We're trying to keep a running record of what is going on, why people are leaving, why people would be interested in coming here. And so far, we've got years' worth of information that we would be glad to share with this board. And basically, this information includes all of the businesses that started between 2000 and 2011 through the end of 2012. And then we've gone down the line, and we've crossed out the ones that have not business from its inception in 2011 to 2012. So it shows a pattern, it shows a history, and what it tells us, and I'm sure that it tells everyone sitting here, that we can no longer depend on the energy industry. We have to find more sustainable business to come in here. I mean, I can envision Silicon Valley out here, out east of town or anywhere in Los Angeles, that they can set up a quiet industry, it's very productive, hire thousands of people. I mean, that's my vision. I mean, it's something that we could support. And, you know, the college is working with us to train new people and for different occupations that would coincide with business coming in.
This is, and then we're going to get out of your hair. This is really hard, and we spend a lot of time just talking back and forth on what can we do and where can we go and so on. And the college is on our side. They're, you know, they need something trained. All we've got to do is call them, and they'll put a program together to train workers. We already have that relationship. Excuse me. But it's, the Roundtable is working on this, SAT, Strong Economics Together is working on this sort of thing, on economics. Nobody has yet, there's a lot of good ideas. In fact, a lot of the ideas that we've come up with, that we got down on paper, we just got, SAT just emailed out, and those of you that are on the email, you'll see it. It's kind of a PowerPoint presentation. John Beluscia, the county administrator over in Pueblo County, put this together. And the things that they've lined out there are the exact same things.
Well, in a different order.
Yeah, in a different order, but they're the exact same things. We all know what the barriers or what the positive things are.
And the major difference is, is that SAT and some of these other organizations will have to spend $20,000 to ask a company to come in to tell us what to do.
This is what I was going to say, both the Roundtable and SAT, bottom line, realize with all of our intelligence we have in this whole area, we're all smart people, but to come up with a plan that's really good, and hopefully, working with Tom, we're going to be able to accomplish that. But both SAT and the Roundtable, their bottom line is, we need to hire somebody to come in and put the plan together. And we're doing the same thing, but we're not going to hire somebody.
I believe we are capable with...
We're going to try to do that.
The city, our new board, with our president and economic development, we are capable of putting that plan together. And that's what I meant when I said we have reachable goals, goals that can be accomplished, but that does not mean that we can bring business into this city overnight. We have to change the perception of an energy-dependent city. We have to change that perception. And I know people, people don't like change. It's scary, but it's exciting. And I think what's happening is we're being forced into the corner. We either change, or we're going to die.
Any questions?
I just have one. In connection with the internet accessibility and the fiber optics, I'm assuming we have got sufficient bandwidth that if we wanted to attract, for example, somebody who's a software developer or whatever, it would have the capacity to meet their needs.
Yes, that's true. In fact, excuse me, we have, at the Bell Block where our office is, there's fiber optics there. And we're, we talked about it at the last board meeting, about switching our whole thing in our office from Quest, or from CenturyLink, over to fiber optics. And it looks like switching it over and keeping everything that we've got, we're going to be able to save something like about $50 a month on our bill. But what we have now, and I don't understand this, but we've got 10M or 10G, whatever it is, currently. If we go to the fiber optics, it'll automatically go to 15. So it's...
Yeah, it's the speed that you can push out data or receive.
But the question that you asked, yes, it, the capacity is there. That was the first thing that I asked the rep when she came out because of the industrial park. Could we handle some of that? Yes, yes, we can.
Who's running the fiber optics? Is that Verizon or someone?
CCOM.
CCOM?
And they, it's already down Commercial Street. There's about five or six people down in that area that have it connected. Stephen, what would it take to, you have 175,000 or something like that? Well, it's, yeah, no, we have 190,000 to 100. Okay. 30,000 of that has already been spoken for. So it's now 160,000, and another approximately 12, maybe 15, is going to be spoken for, too. So now we're down to, it's about $1.45.
So how do we change some of that money to be used for data structure if we have somebody wanting to buy the lots to have an incentive to put some utilities in there?
I can use that money to put the utilities in there. I've already done that. When AmeriGas came in in 2011, we put in the water and the electric there. And we use that money from restricted funds because we can.
Wouldn't that be an incentive to use for the industrial park?
For relocation in the industrial...
Yes, for somebody to want to move there, right?
Well, we're supposed to have that channel ready, which means that it's our responsibility anyway to put those in. So that's not really an incentive because we're supposed to have it there anyways. I, that's a good point.
What would you use as an incentive for industrial park?
Well, like I've already done, free land for a year or two, or however, just to get them off the ground. Oh, what was the other one? We also looked into, like, like the brew, well, like AmeriGas, because we've already done that, too. We put the utilities in, paid for through the restricted funds. And then we graded the lot, put the fencing in, and all of that, that was an incentive. So we paid for that fencing at the time. So we would do that. We would clear the land and get it ready for it to build and build it. And we can do that. We should, we should do it. Anything else? Well, the other thing, too, another incentive, is negotiating, negotiating the price for the property. So those, the lots right now have a market value of about $12,800. Say, we'll let you have it for $10,000, whatever it takes. Okay? Thank you. Good.
I think you guys all have your agenda. What I want to do with the introduction is just kind of go over what I thought we might do for today, but I also want to hear from counsel on what your expectations are for the day. But just to go through the agenda and see if you feel like you want to adjust anything, introduction's going to include a little exercise to try to get our blood flowing and our thoughts flowing and our brains flowing. Then I was going to go through briefly and highlight some of the accomplishments that I, from my impression, from talking with staff and staff giving me some updates, how things have gone in the past year. There was a list of 90 odd objectives that was put together about a year ago with the meeting with the S. And a lot of things have been accomplished or are in progress. Then we can take a little, short little break. Then I wanted to have a discussion and start thinking about, and I don't know if we'll get complete today or not, but a vision... get complete today or not, but a vision or mission statement, what's your thoughts on that? How would you like to proceed? We can put some thoughts on it on the whiteboard, with the idea of just getting the thoughts out there, seeing if we can't come up with something, and then knowing that we may have to, to work with it over the next several weeks. Lunch is going to come in, I believe it's a sandwich board and some salad. Then start tackling what your thoughts are, based on what has been done in 2012, what may be left to be done from 2012. From 2012's list, what are new or renewed priorities and goals? Take another little break. I wanted to introduce the concept of council policies or how we do business. I've got some, some thoughts on that, but I also want to talk to the city council. Then we'll do a little wrap-up and another little exercise. But I really want to make this, your day to give information to me so I can take it back to staff, and we can then work with that information and bring it back to council periodically with some updates on what, how staff is going to match with it. With my ultimate goal for myself is to kind of set the pattern for this year, maybe next year, some things maybe five years out, but tie that to what staff is doing for the community to make sure that we're going down the same path, and then further tie that with the budget as we start looking at the budget for 2014 and beyond. So that, I'll just open it up on, you know, any questions or thoughts, is the agenda kind of where you think it is, or based on some of the homework I gave you, which I'm not going to delve into that, that was mainly to get your creative juices going. If you want to pass information on as a result of that, I'll happily take and incorporate it. But I wanted to use, I used both the book and the questions to get you thinking about things. So with that, I'm going to open it up to the members of council.
Oh, okay, that's right.
Is there any thoughts or questions? What would you like to get out of, am I missing? Am I way over here and you're over there?
I think that coming out as you have in a permanent position, we've gotten a little bit chaotic and unstructured and treading water, if you mind. And I'm thinking now that what I was expecting or anticipating is we go through like a long period of assessment, what do we need to do, what kind of problems do we have, and what's our potential, and where can we go? What are priorities, you know? What do we need to fix? Where, do we have loose ends? Mark them, you know? And this makes summation time for things about what, where, basically where we are in assessment. And then to try and have some sort of a direction or a structured kind of attack of what we're going to do in order to address the issues that we all raised. In preparation for this, I, this thought occurred to me, I was prepared somewhat of a launch of this, of things that were important. I met on occasion with a couple of folks who gave me some ideas of things of value to them, and I mentioned, yes, I said, I don't know. And that's kind of what I was expecting. I anticipated there'd be different crowds and all, but there'd be some kind of team building exercise or something like that. It's a very good thing. You know, I've not been for a lottery retreat, I know in the patrol, we did kind of team building things when we took on a dimension of approach to what we were trying, you know, we were doing, that kind of a business approach to things, with the deviation, where the act was necessary, included trust and that sort of stuff. It didn't come to feeling, but that, that's kind of what I was expecting.
Ken, I think I can cover some of your thoughts.
Sure.
Or some, I can give you some of my thoughts based on what I observed.
Right.
Probably under the 2013, 2014 goals.
Right.
So I am prepared with some high-level observation based on what I observed, but also some feedback that I've recently got from some citizens.
Okay.
On some things. And it's still in the, I still want to delve deeper into it, but, but those are good thoughts, and I'd like to hear what, what your input is as well.
Yeah, like they, I, I was saying, okay, we're putting together a team to attack this, we're putting together an army, and what we're going to do, and there are key people that we're missing. The bills, maybe we need a couple, I thought we talked about that. I thought you told us, or we are told that there's a number of candidates for these financial officer positions.
Right.
And just try and figure out, where are we in putting assembly and management candidates? And how firm are we in getting a front put together so that we can go to work, whatever we're trying to do? And to identify other key people that we need or need to, or reestablish or recreate or reposition, and put our, our selves in order to expect to go and work.
And helping that management team become more proactive rather than reactive.
Tom, should I be planning the attack? Assault plan?
Maybe we'll make you the scribe.
Sorry, I was in the men's room, but maybe you can.
Karen, you said something else, other...
Proactive, how management could be, be active, proactive, rather than reactive.
Okay.
I'm just curious if everybody had an opportunity to go through that handout, we did things to ponder, and at what point can we start giving you our feedback regarding those questions?
I wasn't anticipating using that, I was more of a, my thought, and I can, and this, this can be fluid, this is fluid. My thought was that was to get you thinking, to give me input as we're going through the retreat process. And if you want to give me the actual feedback, that's fine, or if you want to discuss it somewhere during this, today, we can do that as well.
That's a tricky idea, isn't it?
I am an overachiever.
So get lawyers, I'm sorry.
Why, how?
No, not always.
How many of you are just yours?
And if there's, there's a lot to accomplish here, I think. And if we want to scratch something and do it at like a work session for a city council, we can do that as well, if you'd like to spend some more time on giving me some input as well, based on the questions.
I anticipated this would be casual, obviously, and a little bit free-flowing.
Yeah.
And just, you know, you let your guard down, despite the presence of video cameras and all that, and recording every move we make. But that's okay, I'm not afraid, there's nothing that I won't say, and I wouldn't say to anybody else.
Okay.
And just let our guard down and speak candidly and honestly.
Okay.
Not so much where we've been, everybody knows that, and it's not an issue, but more importantly, where we're trying to go.
Okay, sounds good. Michelle?
And Tom, I hope it doesn't get lost in the shuffle here, but we'd love to learn from your experience managing a city.
Okay.
You know, we've been on the job for two and a half months. I'm not a, I'm fairly new to the council, I have some ideas, but I don't, I don't, I don't know what I don't know, and I'm looking to be able to do that.
Can I ask a follow-up? Is that specific to being a council member?
No, I think it's, it's how to make cities grow, or how to avoid the trend. You know, this is a very interesting book, you obviously think very highly of it, there are a lot of very dense ideas. So I'd like to hear from your wealth of experience, what you're ready to do.
Okay.
And since you have so much experience in the state of Colorado, you know, you know, what's underneath every rock.
Okay. So can I make a suggestion, based on what I'm hearing? Maybe we don't go for the 212, 2012 conference. Maybe we delve more into this type of stuff and kind of see where we can end up. Because I think a lot of that, my gut tells me, a lot of that is going to get to a lot of what we've got in here. The thing we might not get to tackle, and we can look at at the end of the day, is maybe mission, mission statement.